All right, good evening all. It is now 7:02 on Thursday, February 19th. We'll call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda for tonight is agenda changes. There are two that I know of. The under-board issues, the one will be swearing in of Dave Smith. And the second is, what do you want to call it?
Um, I don't know. Areas of focus.
Focus areas.
And then I wanted to, I don't know if it's the email stuff or do we want to talk about that elsewhere?
We can do that there. Focus areas for commissioners.
Right.
And then email. Yes, sir?
I could not understand, I could not hear.
No, this line. On these, the agenda changes are Dave Smith swearing in under-board issues, focus areas for commissioners under-board areas, and then an email comment. Yes, sir? Does anybody else have any other board issues or any other changes to the agenda for this evening?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to add to unfinished business, as I've been told is the proper term. The subcommittee report on NWA program, what do we call it? NY Program's Way Ahead Subcommittee Report to unfinished business.
Got it. Any other agenda changes?
Under unfinished business, the appointment of interim director.
Appointments of interim director. All right. Further changes? All right. No further changes. We'll move on to board issues. Dave?
Yes.
Stand up. Name your.
This is good.
This is good. I'm trying to stand up all the way. Um, repeat that to me. I, Steve Ane.
I, Dave Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of.
And discharge the duties of.
The Office of North Whibley Park and Recreation District Commissioner, Position 5.
Office of North Whibley Parks and Recreation District Commissioner, Position 5.
According to the law, for the best of my ability.
According to the law, for the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make a copy of that, stays with us, and according to Michelle from down at the auditor's office, the original needs to go down to her. So if we can get that down to her, I think tomorrow or Friday.
Thursday next week.
Thursday next week. Thank you, ma'am. All right, that was quick and easy. Next on the agenda is.
The focus areas.
Focus areas of the commission. And one thing I noticed that is missing on the agenda is the initial public comments. I just stopped myself short. I apologize.
You're right. It's something.
Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? Because we do not want to skip that. We should stop board issues and take public comment first.
We have one.
Two.
Two.
Yes.
Ms. Carroll.
Yeah. Excuse me, I have a call, and so I'll do the best I can to be well heard. I'm speaking tonight because I understand that the board is evaluating the future of the swim team at this time. I have a vested interest in this decision as a taxpayer, a member of the community for the past eighteen years, and a parent of a swimmer on the swim team for the past seven. To begin, I want to reflect on the recent history of the team. In the fall of 2012, the board at that time decided to terminate the longstanding head coach Neil Rocky. Neil had built the swim team over his ten-year tenure to a group of 120 swimmers, ranging from young children, new to the sport, to a solid group of swimmers who competed successfully all over the state. A few of them went on to swim nationally or at the collegiate level. Additionally, Neil developed a thriving masters team of 30-plus swimmers. Meets were conducted throughout the year, with NWA hosting two large meets annually, the favorite one held over the long fall and happening weekend. This meet drew hundreds of swimmers from teams all over Washington and even as far as Canada. These meets brought significant money in the door, as well as revenue to the community, and money spent on lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. Additionally, the masters team hosted a meet annually that was also well-attended and brought more visitors to our beautiful community. You, of course, recognize that these flourishing teams, NWA and Masters, also garnered community goodwill, which benefited the district as we sought community support for our needs. So the next two years unfolded with a series of changing board members, directors, and head coaches, with the park district's reputation and financial footing on a steep decline. During this time, my daughter remained an NWA swimmer, and we have continued to support her participation, not because we agreed with the decisions of the board, but simply because she loves swimming and that's what parents do. It has been a painful and difficult time, but we have persevered and now see a light at the end of the tunnel. You have done an excellent job in the selection of Coach Taylor. He is knowledgeable, caring, demanding, and absolutely dedicated to the sport of swimming. He balances a demanding practice schedule with his own brand of humor, genuine compassion and interest in his swimmers, as well as a belief that each one of them has the ability to improve and grow and achieve their own personal task. It was my understanding by engaging Coach Taylor for her contract that we finally had a real opportunity to rebuild the team, host meets, and provide the opportunity once again for our youth and master swimmers to be coached and developed by a capable leader. I deeply concern that you would have jeopardized this opportunity for reasons beyond my understanding. If this is the case, you are guilty of negotiating a contract not in good faith and failing to serve the mission of the district you supposedly served. Based on articles I read in the Whibley News Times, I believe there's misinformation that has been shared about the cost of the team and how the fees are paid for swimmers, paid for swim meets. Regarding the latter, the cost of meets is determined by the number of events competed in by the swimmer, as well as the meet expenses. In the seven years on the team, each fee has dutifully appeared on my invoice the month after each meet. So let me very clearly state, the full cost of a swimmer attending a meet is borne by the swimmer's family. The costs are directly applied to the swimmer's account. Regarding the other overhead of the team, and I'm always done, I know I'm on a limited time, such as the coach's salaries and length time, this is an exercise in simple math. When Coach Rocky had 120 NWA swimmers and 30 master swimmers, he had 150 individuals paying for the swim. Now, Coach Taylor, who is just beginning to rebuild the team, will need time and resources to develop a flourishing team again. I believe he is demonstrating that he has the skills you determined were of high value when you selected him as head coach and offered him this opportunity. The word is spreading. We had 14 swimmers compete during the first weekend in January representing our O'Carver community. At our meet in early February, we had 30 swimmers in the water. You now have a responsibility to be ambassadors for the swim program. Each and every one of you should be out in the community talking about our great swim lessons, our youth swim program, and our masters program. With our NAS Whibley Community Partner continuing to bring families to the O'Carver community, we have greater opportunities to grow our team with your support. Use your voice and position as a board member in a positive way, and see if you can lead our district forward to a place where the community values the incredible resources and programs that we offer.
Thank you very much, Carol. Appreciate that. Lynn?
A couple of weeks ago, I had a, kind of a baseball one together, had a conversation with Erica, who she shared with me that she looked at the budget, you know, her perspective, that there's, you know, point to this point and described one, bigger one, and we just need to solve the problem. And while I fundamentally agree with that, there, the other part of that, and I think it's critical, is that we need to solve the problem, we have to clearly identify the problem. And the budget, I don't believe is the problem, or the financial situation is not probably the outcome of the problem. It reflects the problem. And to understand that problem, my concern is that we have board members here who have bought and sold the lot, who bought the lie, and now are trying to sell the lies, that can be described and is slung in the community. And so it's important to understand that this board's been purpose shown the last three years to have a public that has closely monitored the district's activities, tried to keep you informed, and most often been responded to either with condemnation or disregard. When Bill Walker was hired, he lacked any of the skills, credentials, or experience that was required for that job, except college. And yet he came in very quickly with sweeping changes to programs and to operations without any understanding of how to run a park district, a government, and a current water facility. And in his 19 months here, he overspent the revenues of this district by nearly $150,000. And yet he's been allowed to present himself, even without in the public, as a sort of god of public trust, sayier of this district that was ill, and yet is so financially sound and sound in terms of its programs, including swim teams, swim lessons, everything else, even the water temperature prior to the coming. We didn't have these concerns about water temperature over there. We didn't have this ongoing noise three years ago. All of these things are new, and yet this lie has been allowed to be sold. And as the degradation of the programs and the facility continued, the swim team became retarded. And that the lie that was sold attached to that is unsupportable, and yet I know some people believe it. And part of how I know that you know it's not very supportable is you've not been willing to allow your thinking to be challenged. You've not been willing to stand up to the questioning of what people believe and why, and to hear the other side. Once the entropy of the district was in motion, going from order to disorder, there's really been no stopping it. And at this point, I don't know that there's a magic bullet. I wish there was, but I think it's going to be a painful work out of here. And to think that manipulating anything with a swim team to resolve the problem is narrow-minded in short sight. The problem is much broader than that. That is, one of you has openly acknowledged that you're on this floor to advocate for the benefit of this public entity. That you don't believe in the concept of public support of the district. I'm not sure, while you're certainly entitled to your own preferences and interests, I'm not sure you could advocate for that without violating your office. I hope that as you begin to look at this budget, as you look at the swim team, that you will understand the critical factor transparency. I was honestly horrified today when I saw two commissioners, senior staff, and accountants tears discussing financial situation. And there's been no help with budget. Currently, either all of the board wasn't invited, or the rest of the board decided not to come. I don't know why that happened, and I understand that it's a guess, but the public needs to know, and they need to know that Bill Walker and the board, who's Taylor's team, decided to say motion, not swim team. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the budget review is on air tonight, unfinished business. Go figure. All right. No further public comments. We'll move on to focus areas for the commission. I'll turn this over to Vice Chair Wendy Singleton.
And I don't think I own any special magic here, but it was just something that came up in a conversation between Donna Sue and myself. And initially, and this was last year, and we just hadn't had the opportunity to talk further about it. It was the concept that we would, for this year, try something, which I think, I believe is different, that the board hasn't done before, and have each board member have an area of focus where they are working with the staff more closely, understanding the details more closely, not as a decision-maker, but trying to understand and, trying to understand how things work, what advice we can possibly provide that may help, but again, not trying to interfere with the district, but also trying to understand it better so that we can govern better. And so the, I think, I know you wrote some things down, but that was, and I say that because you have it right in front of you, but looking and floating that idea as something, and to see if everyone would agree that that might be something that would be valuable to not only us and our service to the district, but to the district as well.
So what I got from the discussion, brief discussion we had today when we were talking with the accountant, was that we'd have a focus area where we could look at and then report back to the board to either fill in questions from the elected official end as what the director or the program director might say, and then also to better report to the board so if board members had questions. So like, say, the director was working on the budget, you'd be sitting there and looking at the budget with them, and then be able to sit there and say, hey, board members, this is what Erica was doing, so if Erica wasn't here or something else, they could fill everybody else in. It would be one area of concern for each board member. Kind of like the House Subcommittee or the way the federal government, the subcommittees on each area of focus, but a little bit more, obviously streamlined for the small board that we are. Just an idea. The ideas we had were like a budget person, somebody working on employee handbook or HRO stuff, somebody dealing with facilities and maintenance, and somebody dealing with programs and public perception. So those were just five areas I quickly wrote down. So something to think about. Do we want to do this? Is this something we want to do? And how do we want to streamline how we, as a collective body, work together?
Couple of questions.
Yes, please. No, it's just an idea.
Who met today?
Well, actually, I will, I will address that in the budget review, Steve. It's right there.
I'm kind of hearing some things, I'm kind of wondering what.
Well, I would say, why don't you, why don't we all wait and not jump to conclusions?
There we go.
That sounds like a good idea.
The focus area thing came up in the meeting Wendy and I had, we were not free days of cocaine or anything. We were talking, and this was something that came up because.
What is fair play?
I know. But I was freewheeling at the word.
Ever, by the way, ever.
Ever, yes. Ever. So we were freewheeling and thinking about stuff, as in, you know, how can we make the district work better? How can we do the job better? And that was something that Wendy suggested, and I thought, it is a good idea, because I'm still trying to grapple with, trying to meet department heads and figure out what it is they do for the district to make me do my job better. And I think it would be helpful if we picked up five critical areas, because we are kind of in turmoil in the district, and maybe if we were able to just look at it and from it, you know, stepping back and saying, you know, the procedures that we have in place either are not being followed, or if there are no procedures, maybe it would be helpful if we put some procedures in place. That was what we thought this would be for. Plus, also to give us better expertise, to better enable us to serve the district.
I will hold my comments as you suggested, and we'll talk about it now.
About the budget or about?
The meeting, I guess, that happened today. I do have a concern, and it's just, you know, it's this little transparency thing. I mean, you know, here I'm one of five, and yet I don't know there's a meeting going on. I know it's just two people, but still, it gives the appearance that, you know, there's some things that are kind of going on that aren't transparent, and I'm very concerned with that.
Well, I can say, I can say, I can understand your concern, but the meeting was between the director and the accountant, and I asked, and I asked to come, and I asked Wendy to come just in case I couldn't be there.
Okay.
So the actual meeting itself, no, actually, we're going to talk about it now, Steve, since you keep bringing it up under your breath and you're out of order. But here's the thing. Here's the meeting, all right? It was a meeting between the director and the two people doing the books with the CPA and who's doing a finance review to get to reconcile everything, okay? To make sure that everything we've done this last year has been reconciled, and to check the reconciliations. Because we've had all kinds of different comments made publicly, since somebody mentioned it before, about, people have said we've even dipped into the reserves, and we'd have to close doors and everything else, and we haven't had to do that. But there is some gray areas in the budget that needed to be looked at. So there's $2,000 in the budget from last year, which wasn't spent on the CPA, and that's what it was spent for. The director, interim director, looked at, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10. She followed the policy and looked at 10 different accountants to look at the budget. And right now is under having to go out and get three quotes, but she did it anyway to make sure that it was all transparent. And found Ron Johnson, who was able to help, and has actually been very good saying, hey, this is what needs to be done, telling the staff what needs to be done so that he's not charged, the district doesn't charge him for the work, which is great. So the reconciling, hold on a second, let me get it out. And correct me when I'm wrong here, because it was your meeting, and I left. Did I mention I left?
Harry, three.
Okay. They've reconciled, out of our current assets, one, two, three, four, parts of our current asset, assets with the petty cash account, which is our checkbook, the cash on hand, the reserve fund, and the Whibley Island Bank checking account, which is still, yes, that's, that is reconciled? I missed that. It is, or it is?
For the most part.
Okay, that's one, Ron was saying, it's almost done, but it's not.
Yeah, he says there's a couple of things we need to clean up.
Okay. Right. But they're doing the work, not, not wrong.
Now, he is in an advisory role. We are doing the work, but we don't have to make him do what he really can't do.
Okay. And so what he's doing is he's also going over the last year's profit and loss, and helping make sure that the numbers in the profit and loss are in the correct column and meet with what the monthly statements we get from the district. And I didn't bring that. So, and he's doing that with the staff, and so that's what that meeting that was about today. And we're going to talk about that in depth when we get to the budget review.
Do I have a chance to respond?
Please go right ahead.
First of all, Sean, nobody was speaking under their breath. For you to suggest otherwise, you were out of line.
Oh, okay.
And then I'm all, I'm safe right there.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. Any other questions on the meeting that happened today? No? All right.
Sean, you really don't want to answer the question. You proved that, my friend.
I just asked if you have a question. Please go ahead and ask.
Sean, what's the, can say I'm out of line again? Go on. We'll talk about it later.
Steve, is there another question?
Nope.
Good. All right. So focus areas for the commission, that's where we were at. It was an idea that was floated, something to think about for a month and get back to, and maybe add for new business next month. And the last was email. You wanted to.
Yes. I just wanted to touch on with, and I think it's probably something that we would want to talk about, but also then agree with the admin folks about. We currently have the, so the email addresses are, you know, Commissioner 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We also have a vice chair and a chair, and maybe there's another one. And I think we probably need a sounder strategy in terms of, I know you've already heard this from me, but I feel like we all need to agree to it, or, and/or with you guys, that it makes sense. So while it was, I know it was well-intentioned to move me to the vice chair one, I can now no longer get any of this. So for example, I owe you something forwarding, a document I need to forward to you, I can't get to it any longer. So what I was going to suggest is that perhaps instead of having this kind of musical chair thing with the emails, perhaps what we should do with any of the position-related ones, not the commissioner numbers, that the chair, vice chair, is actually just make those auto forwards, so they'll actually accumulate the documents in that inbox, but they'll actually come to whatever number the person is. So that it doesn't, you don't have to know who's doing what role if you want to send something to the chair. However, when you respond, for example, if I responded, it would be from Commissioner 2. I think that would, I think the only administration of that would need to be, and if anyone has any questions or problems with that, please bring it up, but I think the only administration of that would be kind of the necessity to kind of figure out what to do then with those pass-through boxes. But does that, does that make sense?
I have a question.
Sure.
Would it be simpler for all of you guys to simply have your email be your position without there being the chair changes?
But isn't it possible that somebody might, for whatever reason, want to send something to just the chairman and not know who that is?
Your person.
And if source that, that we could actually designate on our website, when they usually go to get our image, we can say, position, you know, position 2, you know, interim vice chair, the name, and then the email address, which is just your position, if that makes, you know, we can't do that because those do change, but your positions will not change. Is that maybe the simplest way?
Okay.
Because if we add for pass-throughs, like you're suggesting, we're going to have more of these monthly for additional boxes.
Okay. And that's a good, that's a good point. So if that would be okay, I would say, I would suggest that while we probably need to archive the data in the position-related ones, and then, I don't know if things are still being sent to Commissioner 2, but, okay, then I would just kind of need, I would just need to know the stop and start date, and I'll forward, you know, reactivate it, forward the stuff, and that's fine. I'll do that.
You guys want, you guys need to, you need to own it.
Right. Okay. And so, right, right. Agreed. Agreed.
Sure.
So which goes to Commissioner 1, 3, 5?
Why don't we, you don't want to make a motion?
Yeah, this is administrative.
Yeah, it's administrative, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So are we getting?
We're not creating policy.
Well, he's already.
Yeah, I know. I just, I think it would save us some confusion and.
I'll put that on my list for Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, just trying to make sure that we.
Steve, you okay with that? Donna Sue?
Yes.
All right. That's five yeses. All right. Minutes. Minute approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, January 22nd, 2015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2015. Any comments, changes, or deletions? All right, and thank you.
You want what? I checked, I did a super look for Singleton. Thank you, first of all.
No comments, changes, or deletions. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Voucher review.
We need a motion.
Just a minute.
Okay. Let's see. Chair, I move that we approved district vouchers 6513 through 6545 in the amount of $29,513.37 and payroll transfers from MNO account to payroll account in the amount of $39,240.56.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Comments, questions, or concerns?
The fact that we didn't pay our credit card bills, was that just because of oversight and, or is that a common thing? I had not noticed it before that we.
It was oversight in the transition between.
That's what I thought, okay. But we usually do pay them on time and don't have to pay a fee. Okay.
Sean?
Just a minute.
So we have an error.
Okay.
Or you had to approve that. The actual payroll amount, it was $40,000 on the agenda page? Not the $39,000, the $39,000 in the last place?
So the correct amount for the MNO is $40,000.
$40,970.
That wasn't carried over, is what you're telling me?
That was not, it was not, I apologize.
Okay.
So it's on your first, it's on your correct amounts here.
Well, okay.
I can print it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
of $29,513.37 and payroll transfers from M&amp;O account to payroll account in the amount of $39,240.56.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, comments, questions or concerns?
The fact that we didn't pay our credit card bills, was that just because of oversight and, or is that a common thing? I had not noticed it before that we.
It was oversight in the transition between.
That's what I thought, okay. But we usually do pay them on time and don't have to pay a fee, okay.
Just me.
So we have an error.
Okay.
Or you had to approve that. The actual payroll amount, it was $40,000 on the agenda page, not the $39,000, the $39,000 last time.
So the correct amount for the M&amp;O is $40,000.
$40,970.
That wasn't carried over, is what you're telling me?
That was not, it was not, I apologize.
Okay.
So it's on your first, it's on your correct amounts here.
Well, okay.
I can print it.
We're going to amend the motion.
You're going to have to.
Well, what, uh, we, we are, however, this expense voucher number is not the same as this number. Um, one is 27,174.66 and one is 21,174.66.
Do you have a question?
No.
Go back to doing.
No, we know each one is correct.
Yeah, the voucher numbers are all, those are the old.
This is, did you sever one? Yeah, we severed one. Thank you.
out. And the, coaches or staff reports?
Coach is not here, please.
Coach is not here, okay. Let me do that for him, please. Thank you, ma'am.
While, actually while you're preparing to do that, um, and perhaps this is, if this is not the right time or the place, let me know that, but, um, I, this, this all came to us very late, um, and while I'm, I'm certainly not trying to point a finger at anyone, I, I believe, um, personally for me to do what I believe is the responsible thing, I, I think we need more time. I need more time than 25 hours, um, in which I have lots of other things to do. Um, I, I think we need to get these earlier or we need to move the meetings out. And I don't know, again, if that's, if, if we need to bring that up elsewhere, I'm sorry, I forgot, I kind of spaced on that, but I need more time to look at this stuff and, and ask good questions and really digest the information within him.
We've already changed from, had the budget review talk earlier.
Okay.
This was part of that.
If that's part of it.
And so what did Ron say today, because I left her in this part of the discussion? Because that was brought up today, you know, having this earlier so that everybody could look at it and actually do a, do a, do a thorough review, so that other than sitting here or looking at it 24, 48 hours earlier. What did he say to be?
Not give us some of the advice on how to create better and more comprehensive ways to read these things as we were going through. Uh, now are you talking about for the budget review?
Yeah, because he was talking about, you guys were talking about when we had to report stuff and get stuff in for the county and how you tried to, and this is just what I was catching as I was running, how it was set up that way in the past with Aaron and Nicole, and that way it was reported and everything was here for the budget package. And I know Ron was commenting about that when I left, so what was?
I loved it about the same time you did because I have the attorneys come in and start talking to me.
Okay. So.
So that would be.
Joanne and Julie, who are in there?
Yeah, let me go grab one for you.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that's okay. I think part of it is, is understanding what the, um, what's the earliest date we can get it and, and is that sufficient for having the meeting at this time during the month? I think, I think that's the thing is, is, and/or do we have, right, is it, is it a temporary resource shortage that either we need to address or it, it's kind of the, do we need to, do we need to move your reporting up and can we, or do we need to move the meeting out?
He's asking, and he's, he was advising that we try to get these sorts of things done the first week of each month.
Okay.
So that's what we have been.
Is that doable?
We're getting there, yes.
So in the future, it could be doable?
Absolutely.
So then we'd have like a week to.
Then you have about a week.
And everybody would have a week because we also, we also make this.
Absolutely.
Open in public, so it's not like just a.
I mean, anybody who we normally email these sorts of things out to, we can get them as well.
Because I do, I would, I would certainly, I would love a week and, and certainly when we're looking at things that are like a P&amp;L from the previous month, um, hopefully, and I don't know, but that's part of why I want to know more. I don't know the, the exact process and what the timing is, but I, I would certainly like to have it at least a week before the meeting. Um, and not necessarily, and I know I said this earlier, but not necessarily tied to this packet as well. I mean, it's, it certainly is part of the meeting packet, but.
Maybe it's an installment, so to speak.
Absolutely, but, but I mean, I would certainly like the opportunity to review it, to digest it, and even to ask questions prior to the meeting because maybe it's something that doesn't, that not everybody cares about and once I, oh gee, Wendy, if you really understood it, okay, great, and, and it would be answered, or maybe not, but just the opportunity to have a little bit of that.
And as we're, as we're going through the process, I believe that we need to be able to generate these reports more quickly and more easily.
Okay.
As, as these begin to get clarified.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Just me?
Yeah.
All right, shall we move on to staff reports? Are there more comments or questions? All right, staff reports.
I'm just going to give a real quick highlight here of Coach Taylor's report. Um, we did have another swim meet since the last meeting where we did take over 30 swimmers to the swim meet. They had a lot of great races, there were a lot of personal best times. He says he has been able to assess much better how the strengths and weaknesses of our competitive program are going, a lot of the problems with the rosters are being addressed or have been addressed already. They went on to a second swim meet in Belleucamp, it was the weekend of February 7th, 29 swimmers competed. Um, we did get some new dolphin racing suits. The racing suits were paid for by each family, so I, I know I, I bought, I bought mine. We were the best-looking team, we thought, of the nine swimmers that competed for the very first time ever, so we had a lot of shaky knees up on the blocks, brand-new, brand-new kids, it was a, a really good time. And, um, he said swim family feedback has been very positive, and one swimmers won two of the events extraordinarily, high percentage of personal best times. He is also working on, um, new recruiting efforts planned for the end of the short course season as we move into long course season beginning this spring. New recruiting choir and internal recruiting push for, through our swim lesson program, our upper, upper-level swim lesson programs as these kids begin to transition through our high levels of the swim lesson program. We're working with Coach on getting, getting to those swimmers and those parents so they can look to transition out of swim lessons when they're finished into a swim team program. So we're all working together on this.
Can I go up?
It's pretty, yep, that's.
I was going to say, I've gotten a lot of positive comments from a lot of parents in the viewing rooms and outside about Coach Taylor, so that was kind of nice.
And I ask you to do one, one favor, please, and that is to, maybe caution, there's one sentence in here, one word in particular, now for tense, you know, I don't, that doesn't really play real well when people hear that word, then, uh, very few math students, for whatever reason, will not be satisfied no matter what, that either moved on or in the process of doing so, and I would caution against using the words to show their.
I will, here's a second. Let's never write down. Um, it's got typical names. I will give the director's report next. Very, very quickly, um, 2015 labor law posters, we ordered them, they're on their way. We are required to buy a lot of posties for our employees, the cost of the materials was $245.14, which included our shipping and tax. Uh, as we have recently discussed, CPA Ron Johnson was, met with, with the staff to work on a review of the 2014 books and advisors as we inform the 2015 financials. Ron will continue to work with our staff as we move to make amendments to the 2015 budget later on. Um, Ron is working with us, we're reviewing, we're assessing the accounting policies and procedures as we're going along, realizing that we do need to be transparent and accountable to our public. Some of these policies and procedures need to be not only revised, but tightened. Uh, additionally, as we identify some of the problem areas which do need to be cleaned up and clarified, Mr. Johnson has been on hand to advise us as we are moving forward, just making this a much cleaner, much more comprehensive and much more correct, as we are finding some things that need to be clarified. Um, several months ago, we had been asked to supply sensitivity training to our employees. After a couple of calls to our insurance company Endurus, I discovered that this had not been done. I have been working with Endurus, we are scheduling this training hopefully for March. They have been given two dates, they are going to confirm with me which of the two dates works the best for them, and they will be having that training done. Endurus picks up 100% of the cost of that training.
We need to know the training dates and times so that we can all attend also.
Yep.
And then since we, unless somebody's not going to attend, uh, we'll, we'll have to do an open public meeting act and everything else and just say we're here for training, but at least make the notification.
They're, they're toward the end, I gave them one, one date in March, and I don't remember the top of my head which one that was, so I would have to get back to that. It's toward the end of March, the other training date that I gave them was the beginning of April, and so they are, they are letting me know which one works the best for them and when they can get their trainer, because their trainer just have to come out here from the Spokane area, so we're going to work with them. Once they let me know which one of those two dates works, we will have it scheduled and we will require our staff to be there. If they want to work, they have to.
Of course. No, but thank you for doing that, but the question I have is, and maybe you can answer this, that's good for people who work here now, but after that training is provided and you hire someone, what are we going to do in the meantime for those, because surely, surely we're going to wait a year for this?
Um, one of the things that I did ask Endurus at the time is whether we would be given or be able to get from them some type of training materials that we would be able to use as we further go along to hire people, perhaps getting a sensitivity training with a, with a trainer from Endurus once every couple of years or so, but in the interim, whether we would have training materials from them, a video, materials that we could give, training that we could give to our department heads, where we can make sure that every single employee that we hire is given the proper training when they are hired, whether it be through a video or whatever they may do.
They say.
Online test, they are putting together something for us.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was my question.
Okay, perfect.
And train the trainer.
Train the trainer.
They should be able to train every trainer for this facility so that they can carry on.
Yeah, and that was one of the questions.
Your prior orientation and annual.
And that was one of the questions that she asked, to see if there'd be two or three of you that would be there to facilitate in the future, and I said, yeah, we would make sure that somebody was available to facilitate training as soon as we were.
Just a word, you know, having worked with a bunch of young, you know, women, I mean, all 50 people probably from the age of 19, 25, it's, it's really sad to see sometimes the way training, E or training is presented to where, ah, we just have to do it. It, just, just, I mean, I guess, just a word, that whoever does that training, that they approach it more from a sense of, it's a good thing and it's a very positive thing and diversity makes our country strong. And to avoid that, we're doing it because we have to do it with talent and, I just, yeah, thank you.
One of the, one of the things I did mention to her at the time was the, the age range that we have at our facility, everything from, you know, our, our kids that are very young, just starting out their very first job, all the way up through those of us who have been through this sort of thing. And she did say, oh, that's awesome, I could tailor that to make it fun for everybody, so.
That's good.
Yeah, we're looking forward to.
Thank you.
Um, last but not least, uh, we have the swimsuit dryers, we had had a question about the swimsuit dryers, and as you guys see, uh, I did go through 13 different companies just looking at, uh, doing some research on the swimsuit dryers. We have some advantages and disadvantages, as you guys see in the report, we did go that the suit, suit make is the best option for its durability. Uh, there are cheaper models out there such as the Spinx, which have a tendency to fall apart not long after you begin to use them. Um, the suit make is stainless steel, made for heavy usage. The research said, you know, companies, I talked to several different companies that actually have this machine used on a regular basis to find out whether they were happy with it or not, they, they all loved it, said it was great. One person was returning their original machine for a new one after having purchased it originally in 1995. So they do have the potential to last a long time, people prepared for it. There are the advantages there, uh, I talked to the company who makes it directly about any type of replacement parts, should, you know, the, the worst-case scenario happen and we, we lose, we lose a motor, we lose a brake, and they, they do, do the replacement parts made in the USA, they don't have to be shipped out from other companies. The disadvantages, the expense is the biggest one, they cost about $1,400. Uh, most of the companies that I talked to would ship those for free, so that would be the cost of $1,400. The other problem is that they must be hardwired, so we would be looking at contracting an electrician to come in, drill into our wall, go into our electrical. So if, if it's something that we would like to do in the future at some point, we would need to take these things into consideration before we went that, knowing that instead of the machine costing approximately $1,400, when I'm looking at paying an electrician $60, $70, $80 to $100 an hour, now I'm going to be looking at each machine going up to around $3,000 if I look at the installation costs and the cost that it would be to, to not only buy the machine and get it here, but to, to pay that electrician, to put that, that hardwire in as well. So it's something that we, you know, the, the research is there, if it's something that we would like to do sometime in the future, or we would like to do fundraisers, whatever that we need to do for it, that's what we're going to be looking at. Thank you. Um, product director report, take my, get the hat off, get the other hat on. Um, swim lesson registration for January, 139 in regular lesson programs, our private lessons, we had about 66 come through. Oak Parker Elementary School is bringing yet another third grade class in, they bring in four, this is the second of the four, or the, yeah, this is the second of the four, we just started the third of the four. Um, there are 25 in that one, for a total of 230 individuals going through the lesson program in one way or another. We had no staff training in January, the next staff training is our instructor training, it's scheduled for this Saturday. Lifeguard training and three-quarters of our lifeguards are expiring, so their lifeguarding recertification, the recertification is expiring, I suppose they aren't expiring, I hope. Um, their recertification training will be scheduled for March 14th, where we will be making sure that all of our lifeguards are current on their certification. Anybody who would be interested or has anybody interested in a lifeguarding class, we are going to hold one during spring break, which is going to start on April 4th, it will end on April 11th, minus Easter, we will not be meeting on Easter. And then a water safety instructor class, which is for those people wanting to teach our swim lesson program, we're going to look at one in May possibly. And Oak Parker Elementary School will continue their swim lesson program, as they've been doing this for the last five years, they continue to do this, we are paid for these lessons by Oak Parker School District, and each class has approximately 20 to 25 students, they usually begin in February, January, and they go through until the end of April, so we usually get four, four third-grade classes coming through, and it's part of our push to make sure that every child on Whidbe Island by the time that they finish their grade is able to at least swim, at least the basics. All right?
So these are maintenance, I, I got a question. I'm not picking on format here, replace two of the swimming, is that lights, lanes?
Red and white lines.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ah, Steve brings up a good point, employee of the month?
Turn it over, please.
Steve?
Is it in the back here, it's right near, here, I can read it off. So our employee of the month, this, for this month is Joanne.
Woo, Joanne, handsome!
Um, Joanne has took on extra duties as the interim bookkeeper over the last couple of months. She continues to work very hard to ensure our accounts are paid, payroll is completed. She continues to spend long hours patiently looking over the details of all our accounts and has been working hard to get them reconciled. As a cashier, Joanne is also very conscientious, taking care to make sure her shift reports are accurate and that messages left for other employees are complete and comprehensive. She is pleasant and giving to our customers and interacts well with staff and patrons alike while upholding district standards and policies. Thank you, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne.
We should have, and I'll ask this now, because this goes out in the package, packets that everybody could get when they came in, did anybody else want to see the corrected voucher report and voucher, voucher numbers that we're going to sign off? Does anybody else out here, would you like one? Jo, 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 can we get a copy for, could maybe News Times, please? Okay, I'll give you mine here real quick, all right?
I will, just give me a second.
I'm in the rush.
Because I'm still trying to figure out. There's what I'm not understanding. Do you understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Please go.
I didn't make sense. Okay, so now I'm a little, sorry. Part B, round two.
Round two.
Well, so this voucher report has 6557 through 6575.
Okay.
This has 6549 through 6586. And there, again, we have the $6,000 discrepancy. One is for 2117466, and one is for 2717466. Sorry.
I know it's...
I mean, but I'm...
Isn't it the same?
6557.
No, I know, but the other...
Or did I still leave the wrong number?
The 6549 is down here. It's just not in order. There it is. So they're all there.
Oh, they're not, oh, they're not in order.
And the numbers add up the same.
Well, dude, don't... If they're all there, then why are the bottom line numbers different?
Oh, I did.
Sorry. Should they not be the same? Am I missing something? Could I ask more questions? Please. Is that what the problem, okay.
God, it doesn't end.
What?
Just doing a quick... That number is not right anyway.
All right.
I mean, just looking at the numbers, it's 25 or 26 something. They might even be 27s.
Okay.
I'm going to hear Steve.
There we go.
Marine Corps.
Well, and when we were working on this, I did it on this computer. Then they transferred it to this computer.
Three, five, six, seven, seventy-one. Six, one, nine, three, eight, seven.
In arithmetic here, but probably here this year, right?
Yes.
Twelve. The one in Word rather than the one in financial document.
Five, zero, seven, nine. And four, six. Okay, so that is correct. Twenty-nine means for twenty-seven, not twenty-one.
Yeah.
So it should be 27.
Twenty-seven, 174.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, 266. Yeah.
27, 174, 66.
So this is a question. This is, this is saying that this is different. Okay. Just trying to manage all the papers, you know? All right, so Mr. Chair, I move to amend, okay, move to amend the motion to, let's see, approve district vouchers 6549 through 6586 in the amount of $27,174.66 and payroll transfers from MNO account to payroll account in the amount of $40,975.10.
I have an amendment to the motion. Do I have a second? I have another question. I need a second for you. Thank you very much, Steve. I have a second. All right, your question done as soon.
Okay, looking at last month's meetings, since we already found really bad issues with this, the voucher numbers, 6545, we start at 6549. What happened to vouchers four, six, four, seven, and four, eight?
So those numbers are taken off the front of the envelopes, and I really just pulled down the January ones without looking at the end of the December ones? So without going and looking at them? I'm not sure.
Well, are we concerned that we're missing something that would then come back to haunt us? Is it something that might be discarded? I know these are dumb questions, but I...
No, they're not dumb.
I mean, if they're material, we probably just want to make sure we're not missing anything.
If you want me to go dig in there and let people stop us, please.
We'll table this until, if there's no objections, we'll table this until she returns.
I agree.
Okay.
So what was the ending number? Or we need four, six, four, seven, four, eight?
Thank you. All right, full temperature. We'll move on to unfinished business. Today was very toasty.
What was it?
It was 84. That's not what my daughter said. It was not "oo." But part of that is Matt's doing his best job he can to try to regulate and get that happy medium. We have one of our ladies back from last month. And any comments from how the last month's been?
Yes, on the cool side most of the days, you know, but I know that it's going to vary from that 82.
Better, worse?
Today was wonderful. I didn't get...
I'm sure it was!
She's a lot quicker. It was warm. Well, it was warm, I find it's wrong. But I think if we could go 83 and go back and forth, there wouldn't be nearly as many days that we're going to hold. You know, that we felt uncomfortably.
Okay.
But you have to do what you have to do, you know?
I was going to ask Matt when he kept it at most of the month. Thanks, Lynn. If you see him, it was 82 most of the month. So, and so we tried our best to keep it up there. And one of the things, and it's a huge budget item too, and not that keeping it up's a big budget item, but finding a way to regulate it so that we are consistent with our utility bills is a huge budget item. Let me put it that way. That's probably a better way to say it. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
There was one thing I was wondering about. You know, I haven't seen the lights on in the pool recently for the last few months. Is the water? That helps to keep the water warm too. Will you ever not?
Oh, I believe it, yeah, everything.
And I wondered if it was because of the cost, George.
I think we're doing repairs on them right now, is what you're saying? Okay. I got little ears.
In order for us to get the underwater lines to work again, there's some corrosion that we're dealing with back there. It would mean a fairly large maintenance project would have to have us take the water and mumble up the pool down, and it would mean a closure. So it's something that we may look at the next time that we do a drain pool shut-in. Right, yeah, we're...
Yeah, our annual.
One of our annual close downs, and we can relook at that. You know, it's also prohibitive us from having our Friday night light, you know, we usually have the lights, the main lights off and the water lights on, but some of the kids just love it. The moonlight's a bit, and it's prohibitive us from having that as well. So it's something that we definitely would like to get back online. We do have some corrosion issues that we would have to address and then to do some repairs before we've been able to be able to get any of the kibble water, we'll get back into that.
And there was one other thing that, I don't know what it would cost or anything, but the thermometer that they have gives very close tiny lines and builds increments of two degrees for a line. It can't give one that is a little easier to read.
We could look at getting a new one.
Looking into it quite first.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it. I know some of the problems we've had in the past is some of the digital ones. I know they, some have to flow, and then they have to be at different rates. But we could definitely look into that.
You know, I tell you, the mercury ones are going to actuate, you know, but I don't know if getting one that read easier in like five degrees rather than like two degrees for this little teeny fluff and hoping that this person sees like that person sees it. And do people use the pool when you go in? So you know what the water temperature feels like? I was just curious.
Yeah, I used to, so I haven't in a while, so no. I judge it on my 11-year-old when she comes home like today and goes, "Oh, my gosh, it was hot, Dad."
Yeah.
So, yeah. So.
Yeah. But sometimes the cycling, when it's, you know, when it's cycling, we need a long water.
You do. Good.
When it's not, when we're in that other phase and hasn't kicked on yet, that's when I think we're feeling coolest and there's the most planks, you know?
So it's because we're still, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, ma'am, it's when we're doing that cycling, it's in between that, so we're not having that steady temperature across the board.
And I don't know if that's going to be able to be fixed. And as far as the temperature of the water, it isn't a new problem. It's just this way. All the climate I've been here, that's, you know, 15 years. So the older people are going to, you know, really want it to be warmer, but these mountains are going to be good for everybody. It's a public pool.
Yes, sir. You know, listening back to the audio in the minutes, when this first, well, when it got brought up last time, it would have been when Director Walker was here. I want to think it was November of 2013 timeframe. And it was where a position had been signed. And the compromise at that time, we looked at 83 degrees. The position was for 84. We went by the USA Swimming, and they actually have a, basically, a kind of a lowdown of what activities, where the water should be set at. And swim team lap swim, they recommend 78 to 82. And it goes through, and it depends about age and what type of activity you're doing. It's a really neat little, they do one on water depth and temperature as well as air and water temperature. It's pretty neat. It's right there on USA Swimming, so you can go to it. But the compromise back then, when we talked about it, was 83 degrees. And the reason we were reluctant at the time had to do with cost, right, Sean?
Yes, sir.
And so that's what happened a year and a half ago. And here we are again with the same concern. And I personally would like, I would be interested to know what the cost was at 83 degrees, you know, because we've never, we all guessed at what it might be. So we really don't know. And I don't, I mean, and I understand that Matt, when he says, "Now it's crazy, I was able to do that." Sure would be nice if we could hold that 83 and see what the cost was and if it is significant or not. Because when I look through these activities, you know, a lot of them, just for example, resistance training's 83 to 86, multiple stores is 80, 84, arthritis is 84 to 88, aerobic activities 84 to 88, older adults are 83 to 86, children 83 to 86. That 83 degrees personally may be, because I looked at it, a lot of the pools that are multi-purpose pools, they actually do go for that 83 degrees.
I just feel pretty on that board. Everybody smiled.
I just wonder how hard it would be for Matt to keep...
Well, didn't we, I mean, is it part of why this came up was, I mean, part of why this came up again was because the pool was being maintained either actively or passively around 83 during a period in December? I mean, would we feel, and I'm not sure how long it was. Matt or you or someone else would have to... Okay, I mean, but wouldn't that, I mean, that might actually be sufficient data for us to extrapolate something, to say, "What does that mean to us?" I mean, that might be a good...
Kind of give you a brief, as layman as I possibly can. When we, we have 200,000 gallons of water. That's what the main pool is. When we decide that we want to take that pool from 81 to 82, 82, 83, whatever the case may be, we have to make an adjustment in the back which kicks on a pump which feeds from the hot water heater through pipes and begins to put the hot water in the pool. That takes an incredible amount of electricity. They have to be pumping that water. It takes 12 to 15 hours for that pool to come up one degree under the right circumstances. We don't have doors open and need all these other things going on, fans, all that rest. In that amount of time to pull that temperature up, we're paying more electricity, we're paying more gas. So it does raise our bill. Do I have an exact dollar amount? No, I don't. But I do know it's higher. That's something we could look into?
Always suggestion. Steve, Wendy, that we want to try for a month?
Well, I wonder if we have to do what Wendy said, though. I think that, I mean, if you know for a fact it was at 83 for it, because don't you measure the water every day?
Every day, several times a day.
So if you could, I mean, I like what Wendy said. I mean, if we could look at a two- or three-week period, if in fact it was at that 83 for that two- or three-week period, that would be a...
How would that reflect in billing?
It would be our water bill and our gas.
And I don't know what you could do is, I mean, it's not going to mean something here here, but if you looked at that energy bill for that month, if you could go to the year before and look at the usage, not the cost, but the actual usage. And then we can maybe look, especially if we could go back to, you keep the temperatures from back then?
Yeah.
To where if it was 82 then, yeah, I like that, I guess.
If we find, and I would say find a period of time that was similar to what the temperature is outside as well. Because it...
Similar time of year.
Yeah, 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 I see what you're saying.
Similar time of year.
Yeah, good point.
Similar time of year.
Similar temperature.
Yeah, yes.
You know, some of, I mean, there was one paragraph in here, I thought, that really kind of hits it. And the most challenging design, the most versatile, the type of pool we have, you know, seeing a pool can meet every aquatic need. And that's what it goes into. Some of these pools are designed to where you can have these different temperatures and stuff. The type of pool we have, that's old school, man, you know? And it's definitely going to be a challenge. But anyway, thank you for listening. And I don't know if anybody is interested. It's really neat, you just say something has a lot of stuff like that you can get on and look at it. You ladies might like it. And your laugh is infectious, by the way. You make me happy.
So we'll look at those and maybe report further on that next month. Just to keep the ongoing conversation ongoing.
Well, if somebody, I mean, if somebody has information before then, can you just send it to us? I mean, so that we can, you know, we can start to understand, like, what is that? What would that, what would that mean? And get our, gather our thoughts about it overall.
Sure. I will work on it over the next week or so. And I'll let you guys know for the next meeting. And for the other time of future review, it's your pleasure.
It is. It is gas. Yes, ma'am.
They feed the kids gas.
This news is a corn joke or something.
Any other comments, ladies? No, thank you very much for coming. Directors, actually, I'll let Julie go before I show... We going to finish the vouchers and payroll?
Hi, thanks.
All right, so we're going to go back to payroll and vouchers All right, so we're going to go back to payroll and vouchers with the answers for, from Ms. Julie.
Okay, so for 6546, I did find a voucher approval document. It does not have a vendor listed, it has a date listed, 12/18/2014. It has a dollar amount, it doesn't look like it was completed. And then the other two, no records came up at all when we entered those voucher numbers. So they somehow were, it looks like.
That wasn't paid out.
Looks like, it looks like it was.
It was not paid out. It looks like the previous bookkeeper skipped a couple of numbers and went on to the next one.
Okay.
Which that can happen sometimes in QuickBooks when you're creating something and it kicks you out of the program for whatever reason.
And so, and so our action toward this is, do we delete something? Do we void it? What do we do with it? Again, showing my back.
I would probably make notes and void it and have her to sign off on it.
Okay.
It's not going to be down, we can't find anywhere that it's been made up.
And it is, yeah, and I think my question was, how do we resolve it? If you want to follow that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Further questions?
No. I was saying, Wendy, I'm like.
Oh, gotcha.
Have a good year.
All right, are any other questions, comments, or concerns with the vouchers 6513 through 6545 for the amount of $27,174.66? And the MNO account for payroll of $40,975.10?
I had a question, what do you think this is? So 19497, I think it's being the swim.
I think that's cool for my house.
That's what?
I believe it's cool for my house.
Oh, can.
On six. Buyer chief equipment, smoke alarm, fire change.
Fire, yeah, fire signatures, inspections, smoke alarm.
Year-round athlete refund $67? Is that a refund?
No, it was, it was paid out penny cash.
Okay.
So then they reversed.
Further questions? Steve? Donna Sue? Dave?
I'm good.
Wendy? All in favor of the motion?
I'm.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. So the vouchers and expense, the expense vouchers and payroll done were cut up to the director search. We didn't bring any of the, we're still ongoing till the end of this month to ask for applications. It actually goes through this month and next month on the sites. So I happened to come by the other day and look at them. There's a couple of good, good applications in there. Hopefully, we'll continue to get some more and want to decide next month, at next month's meeting, how we want to proceed with the hiring process. So something for everybody to keep in mind is how we want to proceed, as we have in the past, with the hiring process, with the applicant review, and then interviews.
Are we acknowledging receipt of, or informing applicants who have?
Julie has talked to them, and I believe they said that we're still in the process of accepting, thank you, these.
The position is still open.
The position is still open, we're accepting applications till the end of next month.
Okay.
Because she had, you have had some that followed up.
And that's what I've been responding for the following, would you like me to contact the rest and just put those out?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, director search complete.
Actually, I do have, well, if there is.
Bless you.
Bless you, yeah. If there's something in terms of the process, if there's any documentation as to the process the way it was done the last time, that we think is the best practice, I would love to see that.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think there's no.
Last time.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, last time Steve popped in here, last time we had a subcommittee actually of, and I'm going back here, trying to remember when we hired Gino.
Wasn't it January?
It was like February, March, March of 2014.
Right. And it was, we had two commissioners that reviewed applications.
Yes.
And basically reviewed all the applications.
Yeah, I did go in, I did.
And came up with the top 10?
It was, it was 10.
Mine are 10.
10, and then.
Then it was broken down before, I believe.
And then we, from the 10, we had all the commissioners review all 10, and we picked the top four. And then those top four were all given Skype interviews, so as the same questions were asked in the same manner, making it fair and equal across the board.
Were all Skype?
No.
Different?
No. We just, we interviewed two, we interviewed Gino and then a gentleman named Scott Clark from Coeur d'Alene area.
That's right, Scott came, they both came in. I see, there you go. Now I remember that, thank you very much. So Scott and Gino agreed to come in, and we had them both here, and they met the senior staff, and we interviewed them. So they got a chance to tour the facility prior to the interview, meet the senior staff, ask questions, that type of thing. And then we had an interview, is that correct, Steve?
That is true.
All right. So that were 12 last time.
Okay.
So.
How many applicants total did we ask?
There were probably 15 to 20, actually, something like that.
How many do we have this time?
There were probably.
Probably 10 or 12.
About 10 or 12 so far, so.
Some were very serious about it, you could tell others, they didn't seem quite as serious. So the ones who were, you know, you could tell Dylan were serious, but more than a dozen probably.
And please, I can say we have three that I would categorize that way.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments, concerns? All right, budget review, we kind of already hit all the high points here. We had $2,000 left over last year. We looked at, we, Erica, so used to sing me.
Three of the last year.
Yes. Erica went out, and of course, this is a great time of year to try to get a public accountant, as everybody's filing their annual income taxes. So Jones Accounting, somebody mentioned last time, that Jones Accounting has done it for us in the past, so that's where we went to. And unfortunately, they're shorthanded and not able to help until after April, which was quite a common response, which, you know, it's timing. Our timing was driven by the fact that we had an admin assistant and a director and the last chair all go at the same time. And there was a lot of driving force there for the last budget that we approved, along with how it was going to be implemented from the director's standpoint, that's their job. And so we were kind of left in limbo. First off, I'd like to take a point, a chance to thank, and I know this has been echoed before, Joanna, Julie, and Erica, thank you all very much for your hard work that you have been doing the last best month reconciling and, you know, getting a grasp of everything. I know you spend a lot of time with paychecks, frustrated on the phone, just trying to get payroll done. So thank you all very much. So Ron Johnson from Williams and, thank you very much, Newley, they have an Anacortes office, and he was able to help us. And Ron, very, he's worked with public agencies before, and his comment was, "I want to do as much as I can to let the district do their own housekeeping, so that I don't do it for them." So, and housekeeping is probably the wrong word. That they go through the process of understanding their books and reconciling and having a firm understanding of everything, so that I'm not doing it for them. It serves no purpose in the long run for him to do the work and then up and leave, and the staff to pick that work up. So he gave broad guidelines for them and expectations. They've met that, we talked earlier about what they've been able to reconcile and go back and figure out the different parts. He's given them a lot of guidance as far as what's expected from a tax-based agency, and has been a, from my understanding this morning, correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, he has been a very good driving force in saying, "Yes, this is what you need to do, and this is how you get there." And he's been able to answer questions.
Yes.
So basically, what we're looking for, and this part I did get before I left, is that hopefully by next month, not only will our balance sheet be completely reconciled, but our P and L will be completely reconciled, and we'll all be on the same page. And he's also going to help Julie and Erica with looking at the past budget that was proposed and we approved, and how we could.
Improve on that.
Improve on it. Thank you very much, ma'am. So that's what he's doing with the staff. There wasn't really any input from myself or Commissioner Singleton today. We were invited by Ron, he actually told Erica he wanted to talk to the chair, and his concern actually was to talk to the chair so that the whole process was transparent, so I could report to everybody tonight what he was doing. So it was his suggestion, his comment, that this needs to be done. So we maintain transparency. And he didn't want to come and charge us $120 twice a day for meeting with the staff and then coming back tonight for the meeting. And I said I would be happy to do that. So that's, that's what this person saw this morning when they walked in. And please, feel happy to call Ron Johnson, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to verify all that himself. Great guy, is happy to be helping the district. But that's, that's all I was there for, was pretty much hearing what was going on, so that I could say, "Okay, this is what we as a tax district are doing." And so we maintain that transparency. That's what's going on. So are there any questions or comments about the budget review? I know it'll be done next month, or we hope to be done next month with the P and L and with reconciling. Any questions from other board members?
I just had a question in terms of, do we, do we know, are we being billed monthly, for example, by hand? Do we understand how much we're spending? I personally believe it's well worth the effort, but do we have a good understanding of how much we're spending in that endeavor?
I do know that what his hourly wages, his hourly wage is actually fairly lower than some of the others that I spoke, he's $120 per hour.
And are we managing how many, I mean, are we capping? How are we managing his spend? Right? Is it, hey, let us know, we've got 12, you know, we've got 20 hours, I'm making numbers up here, but let us know when we get close to that? Or, I mean, how are we managing that?
I've got to know what the budget is.
Okay.
And I've asked that he tell me when we're there. And I mean, the one, the nice thing that Ron has been doing is, he is, I guess the best way I can put it is, he's teaching us to do a lot of the work ourselves, and then kind of coming back and grading us in a way, and saying, "This was, you guys did a great job here, you guys did a great job here, we need to look here, we need to try this again." And it's been very, very informational for me, and I know Joanna and Julie the same. But he's very conscious of the district and the financials, and has said multiple times, "You guys can do this yourself, you don't need to pay me to do this." He's very, very budget-conscious, and he'll come back and say, "All right, if you guys can do this, this, and this, email it to me, then I don't have to come over there and charge you for the time, and I can just look at it on my own time." So he's, he's working with us as best he can, knowing that we do have, we have not as deep pockets as maybe some of his other clients do.
If it would be appropriate, it might be nice to just get a, whether it's a statement, an invoice, something from him that, again, allows us to, as we're looking at, as we're looking at things like the budget and monies, to understand where that goes, so that we can quantify, we can quantify it appropriately and figure out where it is. I would be surprised if he wouldn't be willing to do that, or if he would be offended by that.
He totally is. And, you know, it's just a matter of, this is the second time that we've had it here. The first one was just a kind of an interview, make sure that he was somebody that could help us, and then, you know, we've gone ahead and been working with him. So I know that I'm keeping track, so.
Well, and, but with, I mean, the only thing about that is, while I believe that he probably is being very spend-thrift with his hours, with any of that, any type of bill impression in that respect, there could be things he's doing behind the scenes that we may be unaware of. I just want to be sure that we have no surprises. That's really where it comes from.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great spend. And just one other thing I wanted to add was, in talking about the work that he's doing with them, this is something I heard, and if I got it wrong, please correct me, but that I heard today was, part of that work on the budget that he needs to do is because the budget that we approved does not directly correlate with our chart of accounts, that there is some reconciliation that needs to be done. And I think it's important for us to, to understand that, that it's not just, we hired him and we asked for his help in this process, but that we actually are looking for his advice as it relates to the 2015 budget.
That's correct.
And the end result, correct me if I'm wrong, is, we will have to come back with the reconciliation for the budget that you guys come up with, and we as the board will have to then review it and actually make a motion and amend our budget.
That is correct.
Because anytime we change the budget, we have to vote on that.
Yes.
So, and that's part of what he's, as Wendy said.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Further comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
That is one of his goals, is that we get through this, and that he guide us as we go toward, as if we're amending that budget and getting voted for 2015 correct direction.
Further comments, questions, concerns? No? Steve? Donna Sue? Dave, no? Wendy? All right. Erica, any last comments? Okay. Subcommittee report on NWA. I'll clarify this by also going back to last month's, well, I won't do it.
I think she'll clarify that, actually.
Okay.
I think she will.
Subcommittee reports. Donna Sue?
Okay, we were tasked, what is the way ahead to determine what to do about NWA and other programs? So, step number one, gather information. Background, budget, information for the past six years, norm for other pools, swim clubs, what are the current programs? Number two, what does the community prioritize in terms of programs and abilities, and future ability? And we talked about various ways we do that, but one, questionnaire out to all of the registered voters, and meetings with constituents. So yes, this will all be out in the open, and we want everybody's input and opinions. And this is not something that's going to be, we're pushing anything through that the people don't want. But we do want to know, not just people who use the pool, but the people who are paying the taxes. And you don't even have to be a taxpayer to be a voter. You get, if you're a voter, you get an essay. And then number three, at the least, we probably need to review our fee schedules, fees schedule. And then number four, we also said, we probably want to develop an evaluation criteria for the, for programs that are here within the district.
Okay.
So that was just, that's what we've come up with so far. It's not finished, we're still talking, we're still gaining information. We will come back next month and report again.
So we're going to gather data.
Yes.
So what we're looking at, what the subcommittee is looking at doing is gathering information. So background, budget, and info for the past six years, the norms at the other pools and swim clubs, and what our current programs are doing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just slow thinker, the gerbil, move slow. Hamster, whatever it is up here.
There's a difference.
What does, yes, I'm sure there is, I don't know what it is, yes. What does the community prioritize in terms of programs and abilities? And this is where you're talking about, how are you going to go out there and do that?
Well, yeah, we said we'll go out, probably a questionnaire, and I don't want to get into the minutia right now of how to do that, just questionnaire to everybody.
We talked about the need to do it.
Yeah.
But we talked about the need to do it, there's no.
And then meetings with constituents, so people can come to a meeting and we can talk and we can have whiteboards and we can, you know, do all that neat decision-making stuff and getting ideas and brainstorming.
I wouldn't do decision-makings and brainstorming in the same meeting.
You don't want to, yeah, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Sorry. The Navy does both at the same time.
We don't. We don't.
I know. This is a middle beginning here, but brainstorming and getting ideas and getting everybody's input.
Okay. And then a review of the fee schedule, which is great. And then develop evaluation criteria for programs. Okay. So comments from the board?
Good idea. How's that?
Steve? No, yes. I think you're developing a roadmap for the future to gather more information, I really like that, especially going out to the community. That's going to be interesting, how we do that, that'll be, yeah.
Yes.
That's going to be a challenge, but I think that's something that needs to be done. And I would suggest that when we, when we have these meetings, and like you said, the brainstorming, to get ideas, to propose, we definitely want to throw that out there for everybody.
Oh, absolutely. And we will publish it well in advance, everyone will know where it's going to be, when it's going to be, you know, and I would, I might even write a letter to the people and say, say, encourage anyone who cares that has a voice, please come, that you don't have to be a swimmer, if you have an idea for what you want the district to be doing, come, come and help.
So I would ask, and this is a suggestion, that maybe as you look at each program, the aquatics program, the scuba program, hey, there, there. On the scuba program, the, you know, whether it's the aquatics or the Zumba folks, or the kayaks with Pete, that we actually get that program person to meet with you too.
Oh, fabulous.
Because I think Pete will be a great source, I think obviously Coach will be a great source, Michelle Reedy, who does all our aqua, aquatic stuff, is going to be a great source. Erica first, swim lessons, maybe somebody else, I don't know how you want to do that. But use that person prior to the big meeting.
Okay.
So you, just a suggestion.
That's a great suggestion.
Pull that information from that subject matter expert prior to a big meeting.
Yep. We don't want to do anything in a vacuum.
Right. Further comments, questions? All right. That's all I've got on the subcommittee report. Thank you both for all your hard work. I know somebody in the subcommittee spent hours of researching time. Thank you. Somebody Slack, I won't mention any names, Wendy.
No, never having a personal conversation.
That's going to haunt me, isn't it? All right. Appointment of interim director. It's on the unfinished business.
The motion, right, to appoint interim director. And so, we need to...
Part of the thing we did when we appointed the interim director is, we went to Nathan and said, hey, how's everything looked? He says, it looks good. However, I need, I have one suggestion. And that suggestion is?
That we, well, a couple, there are actually a couple of things. And so the idea is to amend the motion to, to clean it up and make the duties more clear and to remove the contingencies.
Okay.
Right. So that was the, the contingency we added, which made us consult the attorney, resulted in a request to, for us to remove the contingency. So, all right, that was kind of a fun circular thing there. So...
And a message from Nathan to you guys, the next time you guys want to do this, please talk to him first.
Okay.
We'll get the message. Well, but see, the difficult part there, sorry, the difficult part there is, we can't do the, we can't act as a board, so we can't just call in, I mean, unless he wants to chit chat with me about everything.
Stop the meeting and call me. Oh, it's not in.
Or the committee board or something.
Hmm. That, Nathan, so...
But this thing was, he said, you know, what you guys would like to do is fine, just until you're...
Okay. So he's...
And let's see, therefore, I don't need to, I don't need to rescind anything, do I just need to...
No.
All right. So Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Ms. Erica Miller as the interim, Earthwoodie Park Rec District Director, including, at the previous director's salary, and including signature authority consistent with the duties of the director.
Ooh, good one.
Oh, second period.
Okay, second. Questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, no. No, no, I was...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve abstained, I have to read the rule because it wasn't unanimous. So as per the bylaws, Dave, how do you vote? Aye. Dave Smith, aye.
No.
Donna Sue?
Aye.
Steve? Thank you. Wendy?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, new business. We're going to move into executive session to hear charges brought against an employee. So it is now, Mr. Chair, how long am I going to need?
Say 15 minutes.
So...
May I say one thing, Sean?
Yes, sir.
For the record, I would like to announce that I am going in as a father of Allison Hoffmeyer and not as a board member. And once again, I will attempt to recuse myself of anything that could be connected to any, anything concerning my daughter. And I appreciate the board allowing me to do this, appreciate the public understanding that, you know, there may be some things that I cannot participate in. And, but thank you and appreciate it.
So it is, I'm sorry, Steve, is it all?
Yes.
It's 8:38, we will go into executive session for 20 minutes, starting at 8:38. Okay. I'm going to call the meeting back in order from our executive session at 21, 9:41. Sorry. We heard some charges, we are not allowed to make decisions in executive session, but discussion has led me as chair to make some assignments. And those are, Donna Sue, I would like you and the director to look at the statement and get further clarification of that, please.
Aye.
And I am going to be making some phone calls to PNS in regards to that. What I'd like to ask the family that made the charges is to give us two weeks to look into these charges. And in two weeks, we will call a special meeting to discuss those findings among the four of us and let the family know what kind of actions we're going to take at that point.
Yes, thank you.
All right. That concludes the executive session part of the new business. So I'd like to ask Commissioner Hoffmeyer to come back up.
Donna Sue, do you know the meeting time?
At the end of tonight, if we can do that.
The next piece on the new business is private swim lessons. Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
A resident of the district shared how, called me, and we actually met and we discussed the private swim lessons. And Erica Miller and I have also discussed it. And I think the thing that concerned this resident of the district, as well as myself and as well as Erica, was that this child's name had, it was submitted October 31st. And here we were, the middle of January, I think it would have been probably, it was right a week before our last meeting, so, yeah, so it was right before our last regular board meeting in January, so, so two and a half months probably. And I had told this individual that I would talk to Erica. And I don't know if you would like to maybe discuss kind of how things have been, maybe a path forward, because I know...
Absolutely. What are...
Okay, okay. Okay, I don't want to, I didn't want to go into, I don't want to bore you. Okay. So this child had tried to be in group lessons. And it wasn't, didn't seem to be a good fit, the parents felt, and I think Erica kind of confirmed that, that, you know, maybe...
Some of these are just a better fit for parents.
Yeah. So the parent turned in the paperwork for private swim lessons. And the way it is at this point, you fill out the form and it goes in a basket, okay? And, you know, I hate to go past this, I'm going to let Erica tell what happens from that point, but this name had been in a basket now for two and a half months and the parent felt that they had not been contacted and had genuinely concerned that their child was being overlooked. Yes.
So basically, what's the problem with that family's request, as is many of the other requests, which is prompting Julie, myself, and some of the other aquatic people to work on, is the system is a little bit funky. It allows for our private lesson requesters to put in a request for, it asks them to list times. Unfortunately, we don't set times when we don't teach swimming lessons and these people are not always made aware of that when they turn their lessons in. So when we have, for example, a, and this is one of the families, that makes it a request for a 4 o'clock swim lesson. We don't, we're not open to teach private lessons at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, we have, we have another program going on in the water at that time. So then their second request is for 5 o'clock. And again, we don't, you know, so you see how this goes. And this happens multiple times, where then we get somebody who puts in a request and it says, any time available, any time, any place, whenever we can get an instructor. My instructors are going through, they're pulling these requests and they're going, hey, this person can do any time, they're going to get the call. So what we are beginning to look at now is, we need to put in a system, and we are, Julie and I, and we're starting work on that actually today, putting in a system where we list the actual times that the private lessons are available, so that when these people come in and they're able to choose the times that they would like their private lessons to be taught, that they can look at that piece of paper and go, oh, they're not available at 4 o'clock, so now I'm going to have to go with a 5:30 or I might go with 6 o'clock. So it's going to be, it's going to take the responsibility out of the hands of the cashiers to try and catch it as they've got all these things going on at the front counter, the phones ringing, et cetera. And it's putting it in the hands of our patrons a little bit more transparent, where they're able to look at it and say, this is when the times are available.
As they're selecting from a list as opposed to an open, a blank spot?
A blank spot, that's exactly right. And we'll still leave their availability to request the instructor of their choice. What we do now is, we give the instructor the first option, if the instructor cannot, because they're full, they're unable to, for whatever reason, then we pass that on to another instructor. We call that person and say, hey, for example, Erica's not available to teach that lesson, we have Rhiannon who is available, would you guys consider having that? We do do that already, yes it is. With this family, I did call them, I actually have talked to two instructors, one instructor was, thought she was able to take them and it turned out that she wasn't able to because of another scheduling conflict that she had. So I have passed that on, that particular family, on to another instructor who is going to work to try and find a time to work with them. Unfortunately, we have so many time constraints because of the times that we are allowed to teach private lessons, that we have lots going on, we have swimming lessons going on, other things, and we do have to limit. And if that family is not available, let's say Monday night at 5:30, that puts us kind of in a place where we have to say, well, we can, and then try and work with it from there.
Go ahead. I've got a question.
Absolutely.
Is that, is something, before you say anything, because I know you brought this up and I haven't talked to you about it, so here's my question, and you haven't gotten to it, maybe I'm cutting you off.
Go for it.
And the only, we all go back to what we know. For my guys at work, I do a volunteer and a mandatory list for overtime, right? You want to volunteer for it, great. You don't want to volunteer for it, too bad, right? You put your bootstraps on and you get it, it's your turn, buddy. And so I'm sitting here thinking about the same thing with swim lessons, so, because you mentioned times and instructors. And one thing I thought of in my, you know, with the hamster gerbil field mouse, was that, I do, two by two, 40 cubits by 30, okay, I digress, is, do we have a mandatory list? So say, family A doesn't request an instructor, instead of giving everybody the, because I could see this happening, because we have young instructors, I mean, it is what it is, we have high school kids that are doing this. So thank goodness they're here for us. Thank goodness. But they're still high school kids, it's, they should be allowed to be high school kids. And one of the things they'll do unless we help them and teach them, is they'll go, oh, this is Shawn Merrill. Well, I don't want to teach Shawn, because he has a field mouse for a brain, so I'm going to put him back in the list. And everybody else that gets me is going to do the same thing, right? Because they don't want to teach Shawn. So instead of letting them pass, because it doesn't have, my parents don't say, I want Shawn Merrill, you know, Erica Miller to teach Shawn, right? They're going to say, well, you know, nobody's, Shawn's parents didn't ask for anybody to teach him. Julie's next on the Mando list, you're not teaching lessons at that time, congratulations, Julie, you get stuck with Shawn.
Congratulations.
Right? He's building an arc in his head. Don't worry, the head will float, the rest of him's going to sink, but you win the mandatory, Shawn. Do we have a mandatory instructor list, or is that something we could do?
We don't have a mandatory instructor list like that, because I do have kids that have different things available at different nights, and so it's hard. One week they'll say, I don't have keg club, I can take a private lesson.
Okay.
Or next week I do have a high school swim meet, or I have a high school soccer game or something, I won't be able to take that private lesson. What I have done with some of them that I have noticed is, I've got the instructors up there, they're coming together for their, I have this one, somebody needs to take it, who's going to do it? And they'll all kind of go, well, I don't know, can you do it? Can you do it? And, you know, begin to ask them individually. And I have had a couple of them say, well, you know what, actually, if they would be available, just please call them and let me, follow up with me tomorrow. And I have had some luck with that. But, you know, we're looking at a calendar that lets us see which instructors are teaching private lessons Monday at 5:30.
That one's got a great...
And, you know, we're going to, we're going to look at that and say, you know what, congratulations, you're not teaching at 5:30 and I see you wandering around in the fish pool being, you know, obnoxious, so guess what you're going to say?
I'd like to add, you know, I want to be, I want to be nice. This is the concern, and you touched on it a little bit, and this was the concern of the individual that I spoke with. And you kind of confirmed this, that these kids, the kids are not all kids, these instructors, because not all of them are kids.
No.
These instructors, in some ways are allowed to pick and choose who they, and this name got shuffled to the bottom for two and a half months. And what I'm afraid of, and I'm going to be honest, is that we create this culture in this place of this, where I'm entitled to make these decisions, show favoritism, which leads to discrimination in any way. You know, I may not feel comfortable, you know, teaching someone whose parent is just offensive or, or whatever the case, right? And these instructors need to know, they're not contractors, they are employees of this district and you will teach who you're told to teach, or you will not teach.
Exactly.
And then the other part of that is, there are going to be some kids who do require special training. What are we going to do as a district to get those instructors to where they feel comfortable? If you have a kid who falls in that autism spectrum, who is severely autistic, right, on that spectrum, what are you going to do, or what are we going to do as a district to provide training to someone? We need someone who gets it.
We're actually doing that this Saturday. We have training both for blind deaf and cognitive disabilities, that's our, that's our staff training. That's this Saturday. I mean, we've got earplugs and blind poles and all sorts of stuff that these kids are going to have to learn to teach in an environment that's not their normal environment. They're going to have to learn to work with kids. That's, that's one of our most exciting trainings. We did it a few months ago, the kids absolutely loved it. We worked on how to teach blind kids. And it was really, really informative for all of us. So that's, that's actually the training, it's not for our instructors. But, you know, I agree with you, that I do think that there are some, so maybe some feelings toward a certain kid because the instructors have them and they say, well, you know, I just don't mesh well with that child. They just have to learn to mesh well with that child. And it's definitely a training thing. But I do believe that, from listening to the instructors' feedback that they are giving me, the biggest part of this problem is the times that are requested on those forms. And we are going to work to fix that, starting, we are, like I said, we already started to work on it today. So it's very soon coming that the form that is going to be handed out to our families will have specific times that they can circle, and I'm hoping that that cuts out most of our...
I touched base with this family, and they have not been booked up, basically, as of Tuesday of this week.
Okay.
Has that changed?
Um, I have...
Because now it has been three months.
Okay. As far as I know, it has not, though I did speak to an instructor yesterday about changing that, and I will follow up with her and see what it is going to be.
Thank you very much, please. Thank you.
So to wrap this up, Steve, hop in here. Will we be able to see the revised form, say, next month?
Absolutely.
So next month for revised form and we'll follow up with this patron and then the other...
Real quick, I did check with Anna Cordes, and Erica knows how they do it over there, because you had talked about that at one time, I think. We had, Anna Cordes does it, just so people know. There's this kind of a contract. And, eh, I don't really, I mean, I can see how it works, but I really have problems because we're a tax support facility, and I think that it can lead into some of the same concerns, is there's a list of like eight names with phone numbers and you call them. Okay, I want that person. Well, what if they blackball a kid?
Yeah.
Or, you know, they could, right? And that's kind of, eh, I don't really like that either.
We want to serve everybody in the district.
Well, partially, that contractor, that contractor, we did look into it briefly with your, and it opened up an insurance... to adhere, and it opened up an insurance in that area that we're just not willing to waive.
Yeah, 'cause what they do is, they pay the kid, was instructor twenty bucks, or pool five?
Well, yeah, it's not the instructor, I got one I talked about.
But so, it's a, it's a privatized lesson.
Basically.
Okay, I mean, it's...
And there, there are contracts.
And I just think that that opens up that door even further.
It does.
Well, and I think, I think this, I mean, I think we just have to be clear about the fact that, I mean, we are a service provider.
Yes.
And we are a tax-supported service provider, and, and that, as long as everyone, absolutely, and, and as long as everyone, as long as the people who work here understand it, which I, I think, and I hope they do, they might forget sometimes, some of them might forget sometimes.
And I think that's wonderful, bringing up in your EO training, is having race differences in people, you know, whatever.
And that's, and that's definitely part of our training on Saturday, we're, we're looking forward to it, we love doing this.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
If you guys would like to come and watch, we're welcome.
Oh, you can, me.
When is it?
Nine o'clock, Saturday morning.
All right.
I think that's to be, I think they're getting in the water, first one comes out at ten.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, private swim lessons? Enwak late fees for December, January, I asked this to be put on there, we had no coach for December and January, so, I didn't think it was, I wanted this to be discussed by the board, that we look at maybe, um, doing something in regards to maybe waiving those for those two months, but Sean, so I'm the guy in the middle, how about we, how about this?
Just, what if, I don't know if we'll have to discuss this, in lieu of giving the August month off for free, people who paid, why don't we just make it the January timeframe?
So we're, we're making a motion?
Wait, I don't understand.
Okay, right now, Donna Sue, right now, if, if a person pays for a whole calendar year, August is free.
Ah...
Coaching available in January, though, or was it a mandatory?
No, what happened?
Coach was available in January, yes.
Coach was available in January, it's not December.
December, we did not have our head coach here.
At all.
And our assistant coaches were surrounded.
And, and what was, they took a two-week break at the...
How many kids are we talking about?
Fifty each?
No.
That related to this, I...
They took an active leave portion?
Right.
Um, well, you're somewhere around forty-six that were still actively being billed likely to leave.
So it's just...
Some of those may be on, have been on leave of absence.
But it's just late fees, right?
Right, that's what our conversation had been.
Yeah, so I wasn't looking at waiving, I wasn't looking at waiving the whole fee, because we had a month off.
We're talking about just waiving the late, the ten dollars.
Did I say that?
It's, it says it here, late fees for December, January, but I'm saying...
No, 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 it's cool.
Well, I would make a motion right now that we waived the late fee for Enwak, for the December-January timeframe.
What's, what's the...
Hold on, I have a motion to waive the late fee for the December-January time fee frame due to, no, that was it.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, well, a second.
Dave seconds. Now we can, now we can, now we can discuss, so...
What's the late fee?
If you can pay by the fifth of the month, you get a ten dollar late fee assessed.
And actually, Donna Sue has some personal experience with this, where even though...
You're late?
I didn't get billed!
And see, that's the problem, the invoices were generating, but the previous administrator for that wasn't necessarily getting the email sent out saying that the invoices weren't ready, and then she did not tell me that I was going to have to physically go in and do that, so the person that I was doing it, I did not get them out either.
Which is the December...
Which is where, which is where the January.
So people's typical expectation would be to receive that, and they didn't receive it, and therefore, their standard operating procedure will...
So we failed, we're gonna make it right.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Their expectation would have been their regular fee.
Well, they would have gotten a notification that says, "Pay now," and we would have, and they would have gotten paid, or whatever, and we didn't do that.
You did.
Cool.
I did?
You did.
I was gonna go look at that, I'm gonna go...
Is there a what?
Is there a ten-day grace period?
Yes, um, payments are due by the fifth of the month.
So, they pay by the fifth, they got a little fifteen?
They...
No.
I think that's state law.
No. That's for...
No, because they're...
Yeah, but that's for a utility bill.
They're due on the first.
Little difference.
I'm pretty right, I'm just saying...
Yeah, but we're not, we're a tax-based district, so it's a little different.
Cool.
Yeah, they're due on the first, so they get that five days grace period, I don't, if they're state law, or something different.
No.
Not the where.
Not the where.
Yes, not that I'm...
Not the where. All right, so, any further discussion about waiving, about the motion?
I think what we need to do, because I was one of those people that did get caught in this, I, I never got a bill, ever, and I kept saying, "Shouldn't I have a bill?" And, and people checked on it for me, and it's like, "You can't find it," blah, blah, and so then I finally got the bill, and I paid it, and I meant to look at the, open up the email, but I had problems, and find out what I was being charged for, but, I just assumed it was right, but I'm thinking, any late fees that are from this period of turmoil in that, in the office should be forgiven.
So do you wanna go back to August?
Not on, well, if, if it, if it can be proven that it's because people didn't get their, the bill, you know, because I knew I was gonna get billed sometime, but since I wasn't swimming every day...
What we have right now is to deal with December and January, we can look at the others for another time.
Okay, I understand, because mine should have started in October, and when did I get it? So...
That would be my recommendation. Passing notes, Mr. Chair.
It's a bill.
It says, "My name is Sean Merrill."
It's a bill, it says, "Donna Sue owes Sean lots of money, pay now," so she doesn't open her read on, I just thought I slipped her once.
My name is Sean Merrill, I'm not as good-looking or as smart as Steve.
Wow, that is awesome. I just spelled Steve's.
I hope you hold it further away, I might say something different. I'm, oh my god, I don't think so.
All right, so the motion's on the floor, for January and December, we're not gonna, if any amendments, any changes, concerns, or further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Discussion, final comments or questions from commissioners? I will start with the new commissioner, Mr. Dave Smith.
No.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Concerned in heat, Adrian.
Always is. Uh, Mr. Steve Hoffman.
Just have a good, have a good day, everybody.
Ms. Donna Sue?
No.
Julie?
You're the vice chair, you're supposed to go before me, yeah, and then, Ms. Wendy Singleton, I just...
Well, the, the only thing I wanted to say is, there was a comment made earlier that, about there being someone on this board who wants to fail to see the district succeed, or, or, if I understood it correctly, so maybe I didn't, but, but fail, to see the district fail to exist, and I, I, I just, I feel really strongly about saying, I know of no one on this board who feels that way, I would hope that if anyone does feel that way, that they would not continue on the board, but I, I personally don't believe that there's anyone on this board that feels that way, but I, I would truly hope that if, if that was in their hearts, that they would not continue in this position.
Was it from the comments?
No, no, no.
No, it was said in public comments.
Somebody in public comments, huh?
I thought maybe they were referring to the swim team.
Perhaps, but, but the comment was made toward the district, and, and I just wanted to be clear that I, I know of no one who believes that that's the case. That was it, that was it.
I've got a couple of things, unfortunately, first off, in, in light of some of the public comments that, as far as I know, that is, I'm not sure what lies people were talking about earlier in public comments, when it comes to either the district or the past financials or the swim team, I, I understand that there's a motion connected to these, because they're programs that are tied to children, and Carolyn spoke very emphatically about the positive things, the swim team, the positive new coach, and hopefully, we cleared that up tonight, you know, with the report from Subcommittee, that the, the board and the district is not looking at eliminating anything, we're, we're looking at how to move forward, and to do it in a way that we serve the entire district well. I, I'm personally excited to work with all five members of this board, because I think there's a lot of positive energy here to go forward. I also think that hopefully, we cleared up any misconstrued understanding or any, we were more transparent. It's always funny, the, the same person that talked about being one-sided and lying made a comment about a meeting today, which, Steve, I'm sorry to lash out at you, I was more lashing out at her, and unfortunately, I lashed out at you, so I apologize to you, but, there, there was no secret meeting or anything else, we, we cleared that up when we talked, I think we cleared that up pretty well, when we talked about what happened today with the budget, and it's funny, the people that scream the loudest about a lack of transparency never seem to get the other side of the story before they pass judgment. I think this board is very transparent, no matter what we're doing, and have people, hopefully, will ask these board members when they have questions, and we're able to answer it, not, not get as angry as the English squirrel got here earlier, so, but, I, I think we're moving on to bigger and better things. That's all I have. Next meeting, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a question, too.
I have Ms. Sherry Hoffmeyer down here for final public comments, did you still wanna make public comments, ma'am?
Just, just to...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I, you know, just sit back here, um, watching, observing, if I could give a little criticism without being...
It's public comments, you can say anything you want.
But, sitting back here, watching the facial expressions of you guys, sometimes it's like, oh my gosh, they didn't just do that, you know? And it spurred from the lashing out at Steve, and like, last month, his mom used to say that he was the weakest to the people he loved the most, and I see that with this group here, you guys are lashing out at each other when you wanna watch out at somebody else, like, last month, Wendy stopped Steve after speaking for like a minute, but yet, these ladies here kept speaking for forty-seven minutes on the pool temperature, and I feel like what we were dealing with was so much more important than we think, at a degree or two, and I just want you guys to, to embrace each other, and, and don't let the stress pull you guys apart, because you are a team, and you do work together, and each of you have something special regarding to it, and I just would like to see you guys work on that one.
Thank you.
For the record, my mom was...
We have no more further public comments. Steve?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Okay.
Before we take a vote, the next meeting is Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven PM, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.